... I will be by my chair. And we will go. One of our largest of our citizens in Kenya. We are today building fourteen thousand units. Then, in the next couple of months, before the end of this year, I will be giving out keys to some of those houses that are ready and for that information. So of these moving units, I added social housing units. To a fast add-on, around over, we have a border of one million. They own a house in a social housing program because there can be two thousand five hundred three thousand two hundred and ten hundred of that house. There are attendants who will be owning other units, one bedroom, two bedroom, single room, living rooms, three bedroom, in different individuals as above. Number two, they were using that housing program to ensure that we didn't lose on the cost of mortgage. Now, a teacher, for example, can have a mortgage in nine percent. Today, if you go to a mortgage market, you pay more than less than twenty percent. We are only changing the housing program by deleting jobs.
Same. People who are monetizing their talent, people who are earning money on the digital space. And I have been to many parts of Kenya and witnessed many young people in Kenya, who today, courtesy of our ICT hubs, they are monetizing their talent, they are working online, some of them are students. In fact, very interestingly, I went to one school in, um, one college somewhere in Nandi. And I met a gentleman called Brian. And Brian told me, you know, Mr. President, I work for an AI company in Germany. Mind you, Brian has never been to Nairobi. And he doesn't even, he doesn't even have a passport. But he works for an AI company in Germany, he makes money. In fact, in that school, the principal told me, we are beginning to have a problem here in this school because some of these students, they earn more than the teachers. So, on the digital space, we are working round the clock. And I have told members of parliament, they need, and I want to ask citizens to demand from our members of parliament that the program we have on ICT hubs, there should be an ICT hub in every word. We can connect millions of young people to jobs on the digital space, to e-commerce on the digital space. Because what government is going to do, members of parliament are going to build the ICT hubs, the government of Kenya is going to deliver internet, the government of Kenya is going to deliver trainers, we are going to deliver computers. It is up to the young people of Kenya to monetize their knowledge, their talent, their expertise, and grow their incomes. That is program number two. That is going on as I talk to you. We have already distributed sixteen thousand computers to all our TIVets in Kenya today. Not tomorrow. And there are one hundred and twenty thousand, mark that number, hundred and twenty thousand young people in our TIVets who today are earning on the digital platform because of our training and because of what we have done in that digital space. Number three, what are we doing, you asked me, what are we doing to create jobs? Number three, we have a big program with the Ministry of Labor. In fact, I was today with my principal secretary for labor, Chadrock Madime, I don't know whether he's anywhere in this auditorium or somewhere else. Chadrock Madime was with me today. I have changed the management of NEA, National Employment Authority, so that we can tap into opportunities to work outside Kenya. What are we doing in that space? I have negotiated many opportunities. Many people have been asking me, Mr. President, why are you traveling? Yeah? And I want to use this opportunity to answer them. I have been traveling to make sure that I connect Kenyans to jobs, both in country and outside country. We are signing nineteen bilateral labor agreements with different countries. In fact, we just concluded one with Germany. So that what happens? So that some of our talented young people, because this is what other countries like Philippines have done. When you have good quality labor, you can use it to drive our economy. In fact, remittances from Kenyans, very hardworking Kenyans outside Kenya, is all the way to about four billion dollars. So that is a space we want to use because Kenyans have good education, they speak good English, they are self-motivated, they need less supervision. Any company anywhere in the world will want to hire a Kenyan. And therefore, we must use it because it is the asset that we have. And that is what I have been doing to try and connect Kenyans to jobs outside Kenya. I said today, for example, that those opportunities are available. In fact, if you go to the Ministry of Labor, eh, website, there are approximately four hundred thousand jobs as I talk to you today. Different types of jobs. And that's why I was staying today. Some of those jobs, like the ones for, eh, in, 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 for nurses, for example. I was in Saudi Arabia the other day. They want two thousand five hundred nurses. We are unable to, um, to, to meet, eh, that quota. And Saudi Arabia pays even for tickets. You don't have to pay any ticket, you just need to be qualified. And there are other countries we are negotiating so that we can get opportunities for Kenyans to work, not just in Kenya, but outside Kenya. Number four, you asked me, what am I doing to create jobs? Number four, we must begin to manufacture things, products that can be manufactured in Kenya instead of importing everything from everywhere. There was a time we were importing toothpicks, imagine. Yeah? And there are people who want to tell us we must continue importing things and products. I made a decision that anything that we, we have the manufacturing capacity in Kenya, any product that we have manufacturing capacity in Kenya, we must begin to apply duty so that we stop products from other countries and build our own manufacturing capacity, hire our own young people, use our own raw materials, build our own wealth. And let me give you an example. Last year, we imposed duty on steel billets, on cement, on clinker and on furniture. There was a bit of noise last year because I put down my foot and I said, look, if we have manufacturing capacity in Kenya, somebody explain to me why we continue to import these products. Do you know what happened? Because we put duty on those products, steel, for example, steel billets, eleven companies that has closed, that had closed down because we had opened the door for importing of steel billets. Eleven companies today hiring sixteen thousand Kenyans have opened. And they are now hiring Kenyans and producing steel billets locally in Kenya. You know what's interesting? The same people who were complaining last year, I met them this year. And they told me, Mr. President, you see, that duty imposed on that product last year, I told them, why don't you reduce it from seventeen percent to ten percent? They told me, no, 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 keep it at seventeen percent. Why? Because they have now invested in Kenya, they were producing those products locally. And do you know what? We saved one hundred billion shillings of foreign exchange because of stopping to import steel billets. These are statistics that are out there. Right? So it is partly why our dollar situation is stabilizing because we have stopped importing things, products that we can manufacture locally. Eleven companies that had closed down, steel companies have opened, they are hiring Kenyans, they are using our local products. Do you know what? I was in Taita Tabeta today. And one of the things I'm going to do next, eh, next month is to go to Taita Tabeta, where we have iron ore, which we have been exporting as a raw material. And many people were telling us stories. Now, the same companies who were complaining to me last year, they have said, one of them is now going to invest in Taita Tabeta iron ore. Not to export, but to manufacture steel locally using raw materials from Taita Tabeta county, including all the other counties where we have iron ore. That is the difference we make when we make the right decision. So we are building our own local manufacturing capacity. And what are we doing in that space additionally? We are making sure that we support local manufacture. It is the same reason why we said diapers, bumpers, we have ten companies that are manufacturing these products in Kenya. Explain to me, somebody, why we should continue to impose these products from other countries? Explain to me why we continue to export our jobs? We have cotton which we are growing in Kenya, we have nowhere to sell our cotton, we cannot use it to produce our own products because we are importing everything. And that's why I said, this year, God willing, we want to make sure that we build our own local capacity. Industrialization, manufacturing, value addition is the way for us to go so that we can create more jobs, create more wealth and grow our economy. So we are not only expanding our manufacturing capacity, we are stopping unnecessary imports of products that we can manufacture locally so that we can expand our products, our, our manufacturing. And thirdly, on that space of creating jobs, we now have six new special economic zones. In fact, export promotion zones in Kenya. So that product is, eh, that, that space is going on. And one of the products that, one of the areas we are going to deal with is right here in Mombasa in Dungokundo. I just announced that we now have a partnership with Afriexin Bank to unlock the first five hundred decas, five hundred decas of Dungokundo for industrial productivity. So we have, I have given you five. I have told you, number one, our housing program is creating jobs. Number two, our digital space is creating jobs. Number three, our export of labor is creating jobs. Number four, our manufacturing is creating jobs. Number five, our special economic zones is creating jobs. That is what I'm doing for Kenya. I know you have asked me something else about, about education. I, let me take one or two questions and then I will consolidate and answer your question on education and on drug abuse. Eh, yes, can I have a lady this time? Oh yeah, that gentleman, yes, my good friend.
Me ni Josh Onsare, muna bari wa TV forty-seven, navellebele, radio forty-seven. Kuna haya maso la mbayo amijitokeza, ivi majuzi, na nakumbuka komba wewe mwe shingo raisu ulisema komba unabuni serikali ambayo ni broad based. Na tumeza kona garikabaraza jipia la mawaziri wala mbawa meteuliwa, umeza kuwateua wale viongozi kutoka upinzani. Lepda suali ambayo ningependa kujua, ye, hii nimbinu ya kumaliza upinzani na ye, watatekeleza the plan ambayo wamekuwa kipiga ambayo uliko unayizungumzia wakati wa kampeni kwenye mbele. Asante.
Thank you very much. Um, broad-based government. I think that's your big question. Let me say this. Because of the challenges and the issues that came up in the last couple, eh, of weeks, going into one month, I committed to the country that I am going to form a broad-based government. And many people are asking me to explain, as Onsare there is saying, what is this broad-based government? It is broad-based government. That's what it is. It is what it is. Because, you know, because, you know, there has been this feeling that maybe this government is made of William Ruto's friends. Right? And, and William Ruto's, eh, buddies. And I said, it is time, you know, I have friends. And, and I, I've, I've seen many people ask me, okay, why did you, you know, dismiss the whole cabinet? And then you hired some back? Let me answer it this way. It was necessary to have a fresh start. Because as I told the people of Kenya, we are going to have a broad-based government and we are going to have a fresh start. So that even those I have given another opportunity to serve in cabinet, they must now know that, eh, this is new. The terms are different. We may have been friends, but now the terms are different. Number two, I also, eh, wanted other people to join in government because for a long time as Kenyans, we, we've been divided on sides. And that's why I decided this time around, let me form an administration that has the broader face of Kenya. And that is why you see some of the members of, eh, my new cabinet coming from different formations, political formations. And I, and I, and I said I'm going to consult. And I'm going to talk to people who are, who are willing to talk to me. There are those who did not want to talk to me and that's fine. That's democracy. There are those whom we sat down and we agreed with and we agreed on their agenda. What are we going to do? In fact, at some point, I was having a conversation and the conversation went like, okay, the housing program. The housing program was in the manifesto of ODM and was in the manifesto of Kenya Quanza. True? They're all there. The UHC program, it was on both sides of the divide. There are things that are common between us. And my question is, those things that we have no contest about, can we agree on those things and move the country forward on the things that are not in contention between the sides? And that is how we agreed with ODM to work on the broad-based government that captures some of the items that we all agree on. Number two, let me clarify as the party leader of ODM did, that we did not form a coalition government so that nobody should tell us we are trying to compromise the opposition. We did not form, we have no formal coalition arrangement. What we have is running an administration on matters that we have agreed, members of ODM, eh, who have agreed to come and work with us so that we can put the country first and be able to deal with the challenges that brings Kenya to where it is. Whether it is our housing plan, whether it is matters to do with UHC and all the other items that we agree on as a nation are important to the people of Kenya. I am not very keen on who takes the credit. I am keen on the transformation of Kenya. So this is, eh, eh, what I can, eh, what I can tell you about, about that arrangement. Okay, we have, eh, maybe we, yes, there is a lady there.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Kadra Hussein from More Radio. Mr. President, allow me to just ask a follow-up question on what, eh, my colleague has asked. Um, you say that, eh, you consulted from different political formation. From what we have as a people, the people who are on the streets, streets did not have T-shirts printed with political parties, you know, identification. Neither did they, eh, carry banners that had colors of representation of a political party. So in your broad-based government, as you have said, you consulted and you've also eh, had people from ODM working with you. Where is the interest of the people being featured in your broad-based government? As they are the ones who prompted us to have this change that we are having right now. Now, to my question, um, I want us to just take, eh, to take time back, you know, from the inception of the Kenya Quazna government, when you took the oath of office, you promised to protect the constitution of Kenya and ensure that the justice system functions well. You protect the rule of law. Eh, when you were making your statement on Wednesday, if I'm not wrong, you told us about amendments of some few clauses of the constitution, including Public Finance Management Act. You also talked about witness, eh, something to do with that, that is an act of, eh, in the constitution of Kenya. But the populace has this question. Why would we talk about amendments? Why those very clauses that we have in the constitution are not being respected? Like I'll give you an example, extrajudicial killings that we have seen, not unless, you know, we can be given files of crime for the people who died. And then also, on that, we had arbitrary arrests. We also have forced disappearances. Not unless also the government can explain to the people where these people are or maybe if you have the information on that. Also, other things is that media rights and freedom from media censorship and also, eh, being granted the opportunity to have the information needed to be given to the public. Also, another, another issue which I'll, I'll just say is on the commission and independent offices like KNCHR, that is the Kenya National Commission for Human Rights, which you can be publicly, eh, held to account when you say about, eh, the numbers of people who died. And also we have Aipoa, where they've been talking about frustrations in getting information that is necessary to prosecute some of the officers who had gone rogue during the protest. That is just an example I'm giving you about the constitution. And also something else on leadership and integrity, whereby even one nominated person among those whom you've, eh, nominated in your cabinet, eh, is actually facing graft case in the ESEC currently as we speak. And you talked about Singapore on, eh, development. Just a reminder, Mr. President, that in Singapore, they have extreme, serious penalties when it comes to matters corruption. Same as Indonesia, that just shows you how grave economic crimes are, especially matters corruption. So I want to ask you, Mr. President, you've told the Kenyans to give you timelines, actually to give you time to work on these issues, to set things right. If we are to hold you responsible today, Mr. President, what is the way forward from now on? Seeing that there is the respect of the rule of law, the very constitution that you saw to protect? And also, in the event that these timelines expire, the ones you've given us, six months, nine months, three months, thirty days, if they expire and we see no change, would you wait for the, eh, youth to start pushing for you to, you know, out of government? And also, would you hit to the pressure that right now we are actually seeing fourteen Kenyans have moved to the courts, courts actually, asking for the ouster of you, Mr. President? What do you have to say about that?
Thank you very much. The fourteen Kenyans who have gone to court are exercising their democratic right. That is how free this country is. That you can actually go to any court and demand, eh, whatever you want in court. That is the taste of the freedom that I stand for in Kenya. And I want to promise you that those Kenyans who have gone to court for whatever reason, they are free to do it and the courts are free to make whatever decision that is constit- that is constitutional. You have asked me, I think, ten questions. Let, let me try and answer, eh, some of them. Number one, you have asked me, the people who went to the streets, they did not carry the color of any political party. That is correct. But remember, they carry the flag of Kenya. And that is why I'm saying, let us put the interest of the people of Kenya first. That is why I'm saying this broad-based government must be a government that must do at the very least three things. And I stated them in my address to the nation. Number one is the subject of integrity, which you have spoken very clearly about, dealing with the challenge of cor- corruption. I have made very specific um, eh, eh, um, interventions. I have suggested very specific interventions on how to deal with the challenge of corruption. I have said, we must change the Evidence Act so that it, corruption cases doesn't take five, ten years. That is what happens today, that we should be able to conclude corruption cases in six months. I am, I will be making the proposal to parliament. I hope parliament agrees with me so that we can deal with the challenge and monster of corruption firmly and decisively. Number two, I have given my undertaking to the judiciary. In fact, I had an engagement with the Chief Justice a few days ago on my support, on my administration support for the judiciary. It is demonstrable. When I came into office, I made sure that the judiciary has sufficient resources to be able to discharge their mandate, to be able to deal with corruption cases, to be able to deal with all the other cases. In fact, I am the president that has sworn in the highest number of judges in the shortest time in Kenya to facilitate the judiciary to be able to discharge their mandate. Because it is said, justice denied is justice, justice delayed is justice denied. And you can ask from members of the judiciary my support for the judiciary. In fact, when I came into office, there were six judges that have been denied their right to be appointed. I appointed them the first day when I got into office to demonstrate my commitment to the judiciary. Let me also say the following, that on the subject of corruption, I am very clear in my mind. And I will mobilize resources that are available. I will mobilize every resource that is available to deal with the challenge of corruption. Number two, I also said, this new administration must deal with the issue of making sure that we create jobs in Kenya by making sure that we don't import the things that we can manufacture in Kenya. Number three, I said, this new administration I am setting up must deal with the challenge of making sure that tax expenditure, we spend four hundred billion shillings every year of taxpayers' money paying companies, paying institutions, claiming tax refunds, claiming VAT refunds in a process that is not thoroughly clear. And I have said that going forward, we have to deal with this problem. So I have laid out a clear roadmap on what the administration I've just appointed must achieve. I know you have said we must respect the constitution, which we must. And I gave my undertaking to the country that there will be no disappearance of Kenyans. I gave that undertaking. There will be no Kenyans in Rivayala. There will be no Kenyans in, eh, in, in Tana River. There was a time we had thirty-something bodies of Kenyans in rivers. That will never happen under my watch. And I have said this with clarity. If there is any Kenyan who has disappeared, I want people to step forward and say, Kenyan so-and-so has disappeared. I would be very happy to deal with it. Because under my, my administration, I have said there will be no disappearance of Kenyans. Again, there will be no extrajudicial killing of Kenyans. I have said that with clarity. And let me also say the following, that as we go forward, we must be truthful. And let me also say the following, that as we go forward, we must be truthful. When the Kenya National Human Rights stepped forward with fake news and said, two hundred Kenyans had been massacred in Kidurai, it was a flat lie. Surely, I mean, a whole institution that is supposed to be self-respecting, paid for by the government of Kenya, how can they go and tell the country that two hundred Kenyans had been killed? Which was utter falsehood, you know? I hope that's not the organization you want to defend, you know? You cannot defend an organization that runs on fake news. And I will call them out, as Kenyans should call them out. We must stick to what is true. Forty-two Kenyans died, very unfortunately, in the events of the last one month. They shouldn't have died. Some of them in situations where the police were involved. Some of them in situations where criminals were involved. Some of them in different situations. All those situations are under investigations. And I have given undertaking that the government of Kenya will support those families even as we get to the bottom of what happened in those situations. I have also undertaken that there are Kenyans who unfortunately lost property. We are also going to support them because it was nothing of their doing that occasioned all that happened to happen. Let me also say the following, that I am a great believer in the constitution. And I will protect, I mean, I mean, many countries that have gone through what Kenya have gone through. Bangladesh, for example, they switched off the internet, they switched off the TVs, they did whatever they did. Kenya is running full steam, internet is available every day. People are talking from all over the place. I mean, newspapers are writing whatever they want. The TV has four screens. They are showing what's happening in Condolee, what's happening in Suyuanyi. I mean, what further freedom would you ask from me, you know? I have the machinery to switch them off. I did not switch them off. Because I am a believer in the rule of law, and I am a believer in free media. You know, that's why the media can go out and demonstrate and call me names and do whatever they want. Doesn't bother me. But that is what freedom is about. That's what democracy is about. So I am very clear about what Katra has said. All you have said that is really, that has really come to me is, the young people who were out there did not have colours of parties, of regions, or communities. They had Kenyan flags. And that is why I am committed to making sure that the interests of Kenya, even as I appoint the new administration, come first. What do we do about Kenya first? So that is what I wish to say. Asante sana.
Yes, my friend?
Thank you very much, Your Excellency. My name is John Jacob Currie from KBC. I want us to set the tone of this conversation, Mr. President. Mr. President, when the JNZs came out to the streets, their demand was that you overhaul the entire cabinet, which you did. You have defended the appointment of ten cabinet secretaries back to your cabinet. The big question Kenyans are asking today is, is President William Ruto a listening president? That is a big question tonight. Is President William Ruto a listening president?
Okay, I think there are too many media people asking. I think citizens want to ask this question. I think, let's just relax. I think the media have been asking me too many questions. Anyway, let me answer him anyway. Because Jacob has said something that is fundamental. Am I listening? Yes. How else would I have twelve of my cabinet secretaries out? If I wasn't listening, more than half of my cabinet have left. It has never happened in Kenya. It has never happened in Kenya's history that more than half the cabinet has gone in one go. So I am listening. And I have said, even the ladies and gentlemen that have come back to cabinet, they have come back to cabinet on new terms. We may have been friends, we may have been acquaintances, we may have... But now, this is different, you know? We are going to work on the timelines the people of Kenya have given us. And some of the good gentlemen and ladies that I brought on board are people who have a proven track record. And many of them, Kenyans agree, have done a good job wherever they've been. Yes, let me listen to the lady. Oh, this side.
Mwamjambu. Kwa majina naitwa mwanamku nondo, mkazo alikoni Sub County. Moishmi wa rais. Swalalangu laja kwa upande wa feri, feri amtongwe. Sisi wa nancho alikoni twapata shida sana pale feri wakatuwa kuvuka. Sejuu shida inato kiaapi kwa sababu, wakati kulikuwa kwa na bridge ali watoni, likua kidogo kuna unafu. Lakini tango ile bridge iondolewe tunapata tabu sana pale likoni wakatuwa kuvuka. Na shida sejuu ikoapi kwa sababu akua kulikuwa na feri amtongwe kifanya kazi, na badae ili xiaive ani. Kwa yonau ba une gibu swalaylo nangu. Shukran.
Siku skia jinalako?
Mwanamku nondo.
Yeah. Asante sana, mwanamku.
Thank you.
Just give me a minute, let me answer, mwanamku, because it's a very important question. In fact, yesterday, when I stopped in Lekoni, the people in Lekoni asked me directly that question. And I didn't get it properly, it is later, because I answered a different question. It's good you have brought it into focus today. That bridge, we had built it, and it was a bridge, a pedestrian bridge for people to cross. It had two problems. Problem number one is that it caused a lot of delay in the port. The port people said it was taking more than ten hours for ships to cross. That was problem number one. Problem number two is that the workmanship was not very good. So yesterday, after it was raised to me by the people in Lekoni, I have instructed both Kenha and KPA to get us a solution for that problem. So I will come back to you, mwanamku, I will come back to you and to the people of Mombasa, and specifically the people from Lekoni, on what it is that we are going to do to make sure that that bridge works. But let me also say this, just hold your horse. Let me also say this, there are two other things that we are doing. Shortly, we will open the connection of the bridge through Kibundani. In fact, I intend to come back here, maybe in a month, to make sure that that bridge is open so that we can also have a different access from the other side going into Lekoni and going into Kuale. And then thirdly, when I was in Japan earlier this year, we agreed with the Prime Minister of Japan to conclude the Mombasa Gateway Bridge. The Mombasa Gateway Bridge is going to sort out the problem of the ferry you have here in Lekoni. We are now going to have a bridge the same way we have a bridge in Njali. We are now going to have a bridge, but it's going to be a different bridge because it has to allow ships to go through. We have agreed, we have signed the contracts to be able to have a modern. In fact, it will be the biggest piece of infrastructure in East Africa because it's going to cost close to one hundred billion shillings to build that Mombasa Gate Bridge. And I was with a Japanese ambassador yesterday, when I was in, no, the day before, when I was in Kilifi. And we have agreed to have a session so that we can progress that discussion. So I have told you three things. I am looking at the pedestrian bridge. We are going to conclude the bridge through Kibundani. And we are well on the way constructing the Lekoni Bridge, the big bridge, going into the future. Okay, let's get somebody from this side.
Skize u ya mama?
Asante sana. Mr. President, ninamashwalimawili tu, nanafurayume gusea forex trading. Utamili mama kama mimi ninafanya u forex. Kama ngikua wotu wanafanya forex, hakuna mtu ngikua nakusumbuapa. Ngikua tumetengeza more than a hundred dollar right now. Because I do boom and crash. So nimepeleka hili somu kule vididini machineani. Vidjana wana lack only smartphone na capital. Na wengile naendelea kuafunza, singe penda kufa na hi knowledge bila hau kujua. Lejambu lapili niwazazi wenye wa toto walemavu. Nimetembaya machineani, Mr. President. Ndoa zinavunjika kwa sababu ya hao wa toto. Kwa sababu mtoto kioneka na vile, mzazoo kwenza kutoka ni baba, mtoto wanachiwa mama. Mtotoyule laba niwakubebwa, kwanikua kwa juu na kuregesho kwa nyumba. Ningependa hiwi. Hizi shule zote za public, kama ongeruhusu, kila shule iwe nadarasta na vifa via kufundisha wale wa toto. Kwa sababu mtu wanatoka shanzu, mpaka tonoloka ili mtoto apate elimu. Ukiangalia wame lala njah, feya hakuna, ate kiweze kana. Kama naze kuateleya magari ya kubeba wale watu wa disabilities. Thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Siku pata jinalako? Pole. Elizabeth.
Kadzo.
Elizabeth Kadzo.
We were with you in Shanzu.
Ah, yeah. Uyu Elizabeth ametaja mambo mawili ya muhimu. Jambo lakwanza, amesema e ni fanybia shara katika forex trading. Kwa wale ambao, walikua wanafikiri iya kwamba pengine forex trading ni story. Utamfuata uya Elizabeth, ataku eleza siyo story ni biashara. Na amesema tati zo kubwa ni mambo mawili, capital na smartphone. Ni nini tumefanya? Last year, tuko na kampu nimbili sasa Kenya. Ambazo zinatengeneza smartphones in Kenya. Ile smartphone ilikuwa inauzu elfu kumi nambili, elfu kumi natano, sasa inapatikanakwa forty dollars, which is like five thousand shillings. Badlo tunaisukuma chini. Katika finance bila mbayo ili anguka juuzi, tulikuwa tumewandwa usuru kwa smartphone. Njo watuwangi wa weze kupikia kununuwa smartphone kwa sababu njo inauze kwasaidia kwa biashara. I am going to pursue, amanitofatilia. Kwa kikisha kwamba, we continuously reduce the cost of smartphones. Ama kupunguza garama ya smartphone. Njo vidjana wengi, kina mama wengi, watu wengi wa weze kupikia kununuwa, wa weze kufanya biashara katika hali mbali mbali. Lakini, nataka nikueleze piya Elizabeth. Ya kwamba, piya tumebalishia sharia? Sasa hawa vidjana, ambao hawa na smartphone. Hawa bunge sasa kutakuwa na ICT hub, kila word. Na yo ICT hub itakuwa na free internet, itakuwa na free computer, itakuwa na mahali wanaweze kufanya yo biashara. Including ya forex trading, vile hule jamani mekuambia juma wa kule kinango ana fanya. So we are going to expand more opportunities for them to do that. Let me come to your second question. Ishu umesema niawalemavu, nanikweli. Pale badlo tuko na changa moto. Na njo sababu, nimefanya mambo mawili tango ningia katika office. Jambo lakwanza, nimesema, lazima tupanue. Ile mpango wa cash transfer, ambayo inafikia wa toto walemavu, watu wanauishi katika wanauishi na ulemavu, njo tuweze tuwafikia wengi. Tume wasajili watu wengi ne waze wamiaka ambayo sabini walemavu, tumewasajili wengi ne elfu mia tano in the last one year. Natume waweka sasa katika program ya cash transfer, number one. Number two, vile vile, tumesema io program ya cash transfer, ilikuwa inachukua muda mrefu sana. Walikua wanangodiya miyasisita, meziine kabla hau jalipua, ile pesa ya cash transfer. Sasa tumetbalishia sharia, nilisema, nanimetimiza ya kwamba kabla mushara ya rais kulipua. Lazima cash transfer ilipwe. That is happening today. That is happening today. We are paying money for cash transfer for people living with disability, for the aged, and for orphans at the same time as we pay salaries for public servants. They used to wait for six months, four months, eight months. But as I made a commitment, I have kept that commitment, and people like the ones Elizabeth is talking about are going to be beneficiaries in that space. But I still agree with you on the third space. Ya kwamba, siyo lazima wa toto walemavu waende kwa shule ya wa toto walemavu. We must make it possible for wale wa toto wanaiishi na ulemavu wasome pa moja na wa toto wengi ne katika shule zetu zote. Na nilipata hiu habari, na umenisaidia. Kwa sababu sasa leo, nitafanya hiyo kazi umesema. Na amini, watu wa wizara ya elimu wa amo mahali fulani. Ntawatafuta, nanitawapatia amri ya kwamba. What Elizabeth has said, because it is part of our manifesto, we were implementing it. Lakini hatuja ikamelisha, sasa nitai fatilia kwa kasi. Asante sana, Elizabeth. Maybe somebody in front here, one of these good people, Nani Pale?
Thank you, Excellency. My name is Alawi Abzin. I come from the old town of Mombasa. Alawi Abzin. I spend a better part of my life promoting heritage and culture. And in my travel around the world, I've seen that the old town, or the oldest part of cities, generate a lot of income. But unfortunately, when I look at the old town of Mombasa, which is actually the Amliko Court of Kenya, everything in Kenya started in the old town of Mombasa. If we take a trip here and go and look at the old town of Zanzibar, the stone town of Zanzibar, it makes millions, millions and millions. Your Excellency, I'm using this opportunity to plead to you that the old town of Mombasa, we need to have an old town planning commission that will plan the old town and make it like the old city, let's say of Rome or Zanzibar, such that the government can be able to make like five billion just from the old town. Right now, it is the way it is. That is one. Two, I've seen for many years the previous administrations, they've been writing off loans for sugar cane, coffee, tea. We come from the coast. Huyu mvovi akiharibikiwa. Mwana hatuski serikali yetu. Ikisema chukuwa hi pole. Kwanisisi, sesipia tunalipa gataks? Kwevihi li mimi linanihuzunisha sana. Kwa shauri, just like other Kenyans wa kiharibikiwa, the other time tulikuwa tunaona five hundred inapatia watu wa mira. Sisi shamba letu ni India Noshen. Asante sana.
Asante sana, mze Alawi. Nakubaliana nawewe ya kwamba, we can monetize our heritage. Nakubaliana nawewe kapsa ya kwamba heritage yetu, kama nipale old town and all the other heritage is something that we can monetize. And I'm sure my good friend Hersey, who is in the tourism sector, agrees that apart from our beaches, apart from our wildlife, there is more around culture, around food, around, you know, what makes Kenya, what it is, that we can package. Around, you know, what makes Kenya, what it is, that we can package to be able to get more tourists into Kenya. And I couldn't agree with you more. And I would want to, maybe as I conclude the forming of government, I will want to see what is it that we can discuss? How can we come up with a plan around old town? How do we incorporate other products? And maybe Hersi, you will help me there to tell, to say something because you are a next part in that space. But let me, before I ask you to say something there, let me say about blue economy. Alawi, let me tell you very clearly. I am very clear in my mind how important blue economy is to Kenya. Not just to the people of the coast, but to Kenya. Today, we are unlocking about twenty billion shillings from the blue economy. The potential is five, six times more. My intention is that in the next three years, we should be making between eighty billion and a hundred and twenty billion shillings from our blue economy resources. And that is why I have done three things on the blue economy. Number one, when I came into office, I changed the program that was there in the blue economy. There was a program funded by the World Bank that was focused on putting up buildings, holding seminars, holding workshops. I changed that program and I told our partners, I will not implement this program. If it is not going to target what is important for the people of Kenya. Our development partners, and I must thank the World Bank, they agreed with me and we changed that program. It is the program, Alawi, that brought me here on Friday. On Friday, I was at the showground here. On at the showground, we gave out one point seven billion shillings. Yeah, to six hundred and twelve groups. So that they can change their livelihoods. On Friday, we are committed that we are going to buy twenty-five deep sea fishing boats. Because the boats we have at the moment, the ones we bought for our fishermen, about a hundred and twenty, cannot go very far. You can only go there for an hour or two or three. Now, we're going to buy another twenty-five fishing, deep sea fishing boats. That can take a day or two into the deep sea to be able to get us the fish that we want for our country. And number three, for the first time in the history of Kenya, we have licensed an industrial fishing vessel. Flying the Kenyan flag. For the first time, that will do industrial fishing. One that can go for one month into the deep sea and get us tuna, tuna and get us all the other fish. And by the way, that ship is going to be making about four billion shillings into Kenya every year. Processing the fish here in Kenya, exporting the fish from here in Kenya. And my intention is to have ten of those industrial fishing boats, minimum, by twenty twenty-seven. In fact, it is a conversation that I have already had with my friend Joe. And I have told him, this is the minimum I expect of you, God willing, when you are cleared by parliament. Yeah, so that is what we are doing around the fishing, the fishing space. We are putting the highest resources ever put in fishing and in the blue economy. That any administration has put in that economy. So, we are building eleven fish landing boats in Lake Victoria. We are building five fish landing, fish landing ports here in sites here in the coast. We are putting one in Moape, down in Kualé. We are putting one here in Mombasa. We are putting another one in Kilifi. We are putting one more in Lamu and we are putting one in Kipini, in Tana River. I have also put in resources to build the first national marine culture resource and training center. So that we can equip our fishermen and women and people working in that space with their relevant skills and competences. We have trained six thousand two hundred and two cockswings to be able to unlock the potential in our fishing space. I was in Kualé yesterday, we are building a two point six billion fishing port in Shimoni. So, you agree with me, Alawi, that we are investing in the blue economy? And we are not shortchanging the people of this region or shortchanging our blue economy ecosystem? Let me, let me ask this good brother, maybe just to help me, my good friend Hersi. You want to say something about that suppose, that space my good friend Alawi was saying?
Thank you, Your Excellency, and welcome to Mombasa. You know, it's said that government wall over, they're not very good in telling their story. And when they attempt to tell their story, people also don't believe them. So, we are honored that you've invited us to address this and to answer, in fact, no sunset questions. Which to me is a great thing. And it just described the romokras we enjoy in this country, which we don't take for granted. So, thank you very much, Your Excellency. You know, I sleep, I dream tourism. And you're very passionate about creating jobs and employment for young men and women. Tourism is the easiest vehicle available to you and to your government in creating employment for our people. Kenyans are overall warm and friendly people. The other day I said, while other countries struggle with attitude issues, Kenyans, you don't have to teach them how to smile. It's natural. Kenyans, in Swahili language, is the only language that puts a foreigner under guest on the same pedestal. And we call them Mwageni, with three Dmwell. We are looking at two point probably five million arrivals this year. And we struggled for a long time, Your Excellency, to hit even two million. Where I sit and with my colleagues here, there is no reason why we cannot hit three point five million. We don't hit four point five million. And by the time we're hitting twenty twenty-seven, there's no reason why we should not even hit five million. No doubt. But Your Excellency, for us to do that, there are few things that we need to do. And we call it the low hanging fruits, no sweat, very easy things. Number one is accessibility to our country. You know, international tourism, for them to get here, Kenya is considered a long haul destination. Anything above five hours is a long haul. Morocco, Algeria, Egypt are considered short haul, which is four, five hours. Kenya and South Africa are Sub-Saharan, so we hit eight hours and above. Now, coming to air connectivity is a big challenge. But I must also commend our national carrier. I'm one of the critic of our national carrier. But let me also tell you, Your Excellency, the day we don't have a national carrier. Is the day we will be spending transit time in Dubai for eleven hours. Ethiopia will be holding us for fourteen hours to connect to another country. But as long as they know we have an airline, they'll never miss treat us. And one thing also we don't know is that our national carrier, despite all its challenges. Is the biggest source of passengers into Kenya. Sixty percent of the people coming to Kenya actually come aboard KQ. In a single day, they have between hundred and ten and hundred and thirty flights daily. All the rest put together, don't even hit forty-five percent. Now, that takes me, before I come to the open skies, Your Excellency, please address the issues bedeviling our national carrier. We've been bailing them out ear in, ear out. But there are some fundamentals that need to be sorted out. As a national carrier, they are not given priority at our airports, both JKA and Moi International. When you go to Ethiopia, Ethiopian airlines given red carpet. BA is given red carpet at Heathrow, but KQ does not get that. Coming to open skies and specifically former Mombasa, and we've been fighting this for this for a long time, Your Excellency. Two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight, we were getting forty-two chatters a week. But the charter business is dying. We now need to replace them with scheduled flights. The likes of Turkish, the like of Qatar are flying into Mombasa, but after Covid, they were denied the license. And we are, we are told, we are trying to protect our national carrier. If Kenya Airways was flying to Istanbul, we will not be asking for a flight to Istanbul, Your Excellency. When you take an airline like Turkish Airlines, it's going to connect Mombasa to eighteen cities in Germany alone. You take an airline like Qatar, it's going to take us to over hundred and twenty-five cities globally. That is direct to Mombasa. And we appreciate that you approved fly Dubai to come into Mombasa. And that is one key thing that we need to do. Next is tourism investors. Your Excellency, good news is, we have a lot of people who are willing to come and invest in Kenya today, beach hotels. But guess what? Getting land is a nightmare. Getting land is a nightmare. When you go to Diani today and you go from Indian Ocean Beach Club all the way to Galu. You will find a lot of parcels of land that are still empty, ten acres, twenty acres, thirty acres. Your Excellency, most of these guys were allotted this land at independence. They were allotted this land, second president when he came into power. Zanzibar, next door, will not allow you to sit on a piece of land for more than three years. You either develop it or you surrender it, back to government and somebody takes it. So, Your Excellency, as you sit now here, we have had investors who came here, they've disappointed and they've had to move elsewhere. Because getting land is just next to impossible. And when you get, the price people are asking for, and yet they were allotted for free. And they sat on it for forty years and they didn't eat nothing with it. So, Your Excellency, that is something we really need to address. We've already brought you to the attention of Excellency, the governor, Kualé, and she's committed to address this. As we address that challenge, Your Excellency, another big challenge we're facing. Because it's going to impact negatively on our efforts to create employment. Prime beach plots have been subdivided into quarter acres, into half acres. When you put twenty homes, the most you can do is employ a guard and a housemate, that's it. When you take a ten acre plot and you put up hundred and fifty rooms, you're looking at three hundred young men and women who've been employed. And the taxes that go to government is big time as well. So, those are issues that we'd like you to address. And then finally is the visa, an ETA that you gave us. ETA, our plea is this, select countries, can you give them ETA on arrival? Thank you, Your Excellency.
Thank you very much, Hersi. I thought you were going to give me some credit. That your hotels are between eighty and ninety percent full, isn't that true?
That's what, that's what, Your Excellency, I said, we are going to hit two point five. We will even go to three point five, we've done very well and we can't thank you enough.
Thank you. Thank you, Hersi. Just for, for, just allow me one minute to tell, to agree with my friend Hersi that we can say many things, but Kenya is going places. You may not want to agree with me. We moved the numbers in twenty twenty, in twenty twenty-two, we were at one point four million arrivals. Last year, we went to between two million and two million and a bit. This year, we are going to hit two point five, the highest arrivals in the history of Kenya. This year is going to happen. And it is because of the profile we have built. You know, many people accuse me, oh, you have been this place, you have been this place. I am the chief marketer of Kenya. You know, every place I go, I raise the profile of Kenya. Kenya is today respected globally. Kenyans, Kenya today, in any forum you go, they will say, what is Kenya saying? Right? So, and it's because of that what we are raising the profile of our country. I just wish everybody can do their bit. So that we don't create instances where people begin to doubt what Kenya stands for. I am very confident that by twenty twenty-seven, twenty twenty-eight, the magical five million tourists, we will get there. If we go with the trajectory we are, we are going. And I will continue to push the limits for Kenya. I will continue to profile Kenya positively in a way that the world begins to think about Kenya. Number two, I agree with Hersi that already we have forty-two countries where visa under the ETA program is automatic. When they apply, within five minutes, less than five minutes, they can travel to Kenya. Unlike before, where they had to look for the Kenyan embassy, go and queue for visa, do all manner of things. The next step, which Hersi is telling me, is that we need even to take it further and say, there are people who, even if you don't apply ETA wherever you are, if you arrive in Kenya, you can be given on arrival. That I agree with and I'm going to work on it. So that we can, we can build another, another layer of countries that, to make it easier for people to come to Kenya. Just by changing the ETA, just by changing the visa regime, which I did in the last six months. We have sixty percent more people coming to Kenya today, just by making it easier for people to come to Kenya. Many people were asking me, why are you doing this? Oh, the country is going to be unsafe and that kind of thing. I mean, we have made sure that there is sufficient checks and balances for us to make sure that Kenya is accessible. I agree with you that I need to do something about Kenya Airways. And I want to, just, just relax, kidogo. Something needs to be done about Kenya Airways and I am working hard at it. For your information, this year, it is the first year Kenya Airways made a profit. First year. And I still want to work on it, badlo ikona kisirani kidogo, but I am working on it so that we make sure that we strengthen it and it can serve our country better. We still have a long way to go and I'm still applying my mind to it. I agree with you that we need to approve a few more airlines. It's a delicate balance, people, it's a delicate balance between allowing more people to fly here. Because anybody we allow to fly here, they must also give us an opportunity to fly to their destination. So that it becomes even. So, we are discussing with other airlines, we just approved another four flights by the UAE airline. What is it, Etihad? Yeah, we just, we just, we just, Dagari is here. We've just approved Etihad to fly four times a week. So, we're looking at other opportunities for us to be able to get more flights. I've heard you about Turkish Airlines, we will look at it. My peers Dagari is there, please, let, huh? Turkish and Qatar, so we will, we will look at it. But you know, there is something called in law quit pro quo. You scratch my back? Yes, yeah, so, so we don't want just to do it. And let me say, just give me a minute, let me say this, it's true. Land is a problem in Kenya. It is the reason why real estate is very expensive in Kenya. It is the reason why real estate is very expensive in Kenya. And it is the reason why I decided that to be able to build affordable housing, we are going to use public land. That is why we have managed to reduce the prices significantly because the land cost was contributing 40% of the cost of every house. But now when we take out the land cost, we substantially reduce and make it affordable for more Kenyans to be homeowners. We will need to think about what we are going to do so that we can make investment, especially on tourism infrastructure, much more affordable. By the way, I am doing something on some of our conference facilities in Bombers, here in Mombasa. We're trying to get investors to be able to support us in, in that space. And I'm also doing something, one moment, I'm, I'm also doing something about the airport. Let's be honest, Kenyans, let's be honest. Yani, the airport we have in Nairobi is made of canvas, in a, in a Jangwanahema, in the middle of a tarmac. That is the arrivals. I mean, this is a temporary structure we put up almost, I don't know, seven years ago. We, we don't, Ethiopia have a brand new airport. Rwanda have a brand new airport. And it is the reason why we, we need to work with investors to give us a new airport in Nairobi. I have seen many people saying, William Ruto wants to sell the airport. Am I a madman? You know, how do you sell a strategic national asset? You have to be insane. You know, so we must have the right investment for the airport. The airport is a strategic government asset, national asset. What we want to do in the airport is to work under the PPP program. And, and people must understand PPP has the potential, public-private partnership, has the potential to bring in private sector money blended with public, public sector investment to be able to create an outcome that brings win-win. Let me tell the people of Kenya, for example, let me give you an example. We are all celebrating the Nairobi Expressway. It nowadays takes five minutes, 10 minutes from the airport to Serena, true? Do you know that that Nairobi Expressway was not built with the government money? It was built by the private sector under their private-public partnership arrangement. You know, and, 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 and that is the model that we are going to use to extend the superhighway from Nairobi to Nakuru to Eldoret to Malaba. That is what we are going to use to do many of our roads. That's what we want to do with our airport. We want to work with the private sector for them to do three things that are critical for our airport. To build a new terminal, to build a new runway and to make sure that we refurbish what we have and remove the canvas. You know, it's a very shameful thing. The airport we built in 1970, I saw the plaque there, by Jomo Kenyatta. That, that, so many, almost 50 years ago. Now, the, the capacity was 7 million passengers. Last year, we had almost 9 million passengers. We've, we are actually 10 years behind schedule in modernizing our airport. Other countries are ahead of us. I want to persuade us as Kenyans, let us not buy into fake news. Let us not buy into propaganda. There is no government that can sell a national asset, a strategic national asset, like the airport. We are going to work in an open and transparent manner to make sure that we develop the airport using legal instruments that can be audited by parliament and by other agencies to make sure that they are value, they bring value to the people of Kenya. So the same thing that Halsey is saying, to develop the infrastructure here. We do not have sufficient conferencing facilities. The KICC we have in Nairobi was built through Arambe, imagine, by Kanu. Those days, then it was taken over by government. It is now 50 years old. We need a modern conferencing facility if Kenya is truly going to be a hub for tourism. We need one in Nairobi, we need one in Mombasa, and that's why we are working with Mombasa, what former Mombasa resort here to see how we can get investors to be able to develop new conferencing facilities. Okay. There is a lady there in, in uniform, some very nice uniform.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. President. My name is Lucy Wamaida Machogu, the Vice President, Kenyatta University. And I want to represent all students in the universities in Kenya because actually we were on the streets and we would wish to inquire some answers from you. First is to appreciate the government and the Ministry of Education because you've set an event on the 9th of August at KICD for all the student leaders and all the students to discuss on the funding model. So some of the questions I would wish to inquire answers from you, Mr. President. Number one, why did you come up with the funding model? How does the funding model work? Do you feel like the implementation of the funding is okay? What is the criteria used to group people to different categories? That is about the funding model. Number two, the accommodation prices in the universities, that is the hostel prices. They are very expensive for us to afford. Mr. President, what are you doing about this? We cannot be able to afford houses or hostels where we are living in universities. What are you doing, Mr. President, about this? Something else about the job opportunities. Once we graduate from the university, we are told, maybe when you go and seek for a job opportunity, we are asked to give a five-year work experience or a three-year work experience. Yet we've just graduated. Where will we get the experience from if you are not given the chance to, to get the, the experience? So, Mr. President, how can you help us on that? Lastly, Mr. President, what are you doing to re-engineer the National Youth Council? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Lucy. And by the way, you are very smart. Now, um, let me say, you've asked me very two fundamental questions. The new university's funding model, why? Very important question, why? When I came into office, the universities were struggling. They had a 60 billion shilling debt. Many universities were paying their lecturers half the price, half, half the salary. It was near a crisis. And many vice chancellors agree with me. So it became necessary. And you know, I have a history. Once upon a time, I was Minister for Higher Education. So I understand that space pretty well. And when I came into office then as Minister for Higher Education, I am the one who developed and, and created the space around our TIVETS because there was a missing gap in our education system. I am very proud that today our TIVETS are a big portion of our higher education learning infrastructure. Let me go back to the funding model. The funding model, by the way, affects both our university students and also affects our TIVET students. So what did I do? I did three things. Number one, we made a commitment as government that we are going to give every student 80% scholarship and loan. But because we could not afford, especially because the number of students, when we made that commitment, it was like 15 years ago. But you know, as the numbers increased in the university, it became difficult for us to meet that commitment. And so what ended up happening was that while we committed to pay 80%, we ended up paying 50%, some cases 45%. So what happened? There was a huge funding gap in our universities, a huge funding gap in our universities. And our universities were struggling. They couldn't pay for services, they couldn't pay lecturers, they couldn't run their programs. And we ended up with affecting the quality of education in our universities. You couldn't attend as many labs as you, as was required. You couldn't attend as many practicals as you required. We ended up compromising on our education. So what did I do? I said, we need to be honest with ourselves. And we said, there are parents like William Ruto who can afford. Why would William Ruto be given 80%, why would the child of William Ruto be given 80% scholarship? The same as a child of Mamamboga. What happens is that both our children end up suffering. So we changed the model. We said, since there is a means testing instrument that has been used for 20 years to assess every student on the basis of the information they supply, and it has worked in Kenya for 20 years, let us use that means testing instruments, instrument that is available at the Higher Education Loans Board to assess every student. And we changed the model so that children from vulnerable families, children from parents who are less endowed, we move them from getting 80% to getting 95%. And children from parents like myself, we move them from getting 80%, we move them to 60% because we can afford, right? So we had five categories. We changed it into five categories. And you know what, Lucy? Because of the change in that model, we also said that scholarship is going to be available on application. Because you know, the old model, every student without even applying, they were given scholarship. But there are parents who do not need it. And for your information, 20% of students last year did not apply for scholarship. They went and their parents paid because they didn't need it. What has happened? Of that 20% of the students, we now have more money to pay for children from vulnerable families. That is how we, the model has changed. So we now have five categories. We have those that get 95%, we have those that get 90, we have those that get 70, we have those that get 60. And we have categorized and we are using what we are calling an instrument called, called means testing instrument that tests the ability of parents. We will continue to perfect, I am, we'll continue to perfect that instrument. There will always be maybe a problem here and there. But we will make sure that we keep that program so that we increase the level of funding in our universities. What has happened?